Time for today's meeting at this time. I'll call the order of the meeting of June 20, 2023, for the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
All right. The next item will be the pledge and tonight's invocation, which will be led by our county Fire Marshal, Perry Davis.
We will both flag our hands in the cross to salute the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would pray, our great citizens, all of you, thank you for this opportunity to come together as a group and be free. Lord, we ask that you place your hand upon each one of these commissioners or elected officials for the decisions they make, and not be in any danger of endangerment of our county in your life. We have some things to say.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next item will be recognition of any elected officials present tonight.
Allen going to share.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Next item, Commissioner Hudson, if you'll take this, any recognition of any veterans in attendance.
All veterans, please stand. Identify yourself and branch of service.
Steve Badig, U.S. Army.
Sherri Yocum, U.S. Air Force.
Gerald Lindgren, Army National Guard.
John Briscoe, United States Marine.
Dennis Stacey, United States Air Force.
I think most of y'all have one with pens, don't you? Anyone that doesn't have one, if you can forward calling, and I'll give you one. Some years ago, we had to end me up. It's a county crest, and under it just got a reference rocker, so we'd call it a reference to end it. We're taking this.
Next item.
And I'm U.S. Army.
Next item will be recognition of any law enforcement present.
Danny Allen, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
John Briscoe, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Allen going to Sheriff's Office.
Paul Todd, Sheriff's Office.
Don't agree with Sheriff's Office.
We have another one here somewhere, don't we, Danny?
He's getting the president proposed in here.
And the last item will be recognition of any county department heads.
Chris Hansen, Health Department. Carrie Melton, Assistant County Manager.
Kate Swanson, Social Services.
Allison Moon, Human Resources.
We just had some fun.
Perry Davis, American Medical Department.
Tom Bowman, Mike.
Sherri Langford, PAX.
Officer, EMS.
Thank you all, thank you for all that you do. First item on tonight's agenda is a motion to adopt proposed agenda. Commissioners, you have presented the agenda, are there anything, any items that need to be added? Here none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Any questions or discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries now. Next item on the agendas tonight is a special event, special recognition. We're gonna, tonight, we're gonna recognize the Burns High School baseball team for their state championship. Mr. Alex Lenhart, you gonna come forward and say anything to explain the process of what the... So it's nothing like putting you on the spot for an impromptu speech, I guess.
Do I have 20, 30 minutes?
As long as you need.
Do I need to be here? Thank you guys for having us, recognizing us, county commissioners, players, they deserve all the credit, the supporting staff that we have at Burns, for Ms. Arabley and the tenants, Ms. Arabley, you send up, her and the staff, all the assistant principals, even the county office, talk about those guys, they have an integral part in helping us, so it wasn't just about us, it's about everybody. They helped us get the building that we have of their building facility in the community, so it's good to win the state championship and recognize everybody.
Thank you very much, congratulations to you. We have something for you here in a second, but I'll open it up now, see if any commissioners have any comments they'd like to add before we get to that.
Well, I'd like to say congratulations, my grandson goes to Burnes High School. Brandon Hutchins, some of you may know him, he's at Boys Camp this week, went to ROTC camp last week, and I got to brag on him a little bit, he was awarded the highest honor that the American Legion gives, a national award, he received a national award at the ROTC college. So Burns is turning out some good kids.
Absolutely. So I graduated from Burns in 1986, my two sons graduated from there, so you all have a special meeting to myself and my family as well. Congratulations for the work that you all did.
And congratulations, but just for people that may not know, why don't you tell us who they beat and how bad and the details?
Well, we had to play two games a week, starting out in playoffs. We played the first game, Southwest Randolph, then we played, who was it? East Gaston, which was a conference opponent, four time we played them, Lincoln Charter and Wes Stokes, very tough team, then we played the best of three series in the Western Finals against Moorhead, which is up around Eden. It was a long bus trip for them and us, we had to play, won in two games, did have to play a third game, swept them. State championship was held in Holly Springs, and we played South Grandville up there and beat them, first game, seven to one, six to one, seven to one, and won the second game by a lot of runs to them, five, twelve to five, I believe that's what it was, so swept them in two games. Final record's twenty-eight and four. As I was telling Sheriff Norman, those four losses was probably my fault, so I couldn't get out of the way soon enough on those four, I guess, let the boys win those four, but great season.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to congratulate all these guys, and when you get as old as Johnny and I, which are the two oldest people here up here. I said me, but he is older than I am. But even when you get to be as old as we are, you will always look back and remember these days in high school and how much fun you had and how much hard work you put in to get what you do. I'll also tell you this, if you will put that same hard work into whatever you do for the rest of your life, you will be successful.
Absolutely. These young men are very goal oriented, they set these goals themselves, going back to last year, had the same goal, win the state championship, and other attainable goals, and proud of them for accomplishing those.
I like to think we have a well-rounded family. I went to, Shelby, my wife, went to Crest, my son went to Burns, my granddaughter goes to Kings Mountain. But if somebody in our county makes the playoffs, we always pull for them, because it's great for you to bring recognition to our county, and we appreciate all the hard work you did this year in order to get and attain what you've done, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You mean to call on each one of them? Yeah, if you want to recognize the players that you have here, and then we have a proclamation, and we're gonna read, and we'll come down and present that to you, and we'll try to figure out how we're gonna take a picture, but yeah, if you want to recognize the players, that'd be fun.
Let them come up as you.
As you call their name.
Yeah, they can come up front. Reed Strout. Come on up. Yeah, come on up. You're leading the way.
Hagan Hoyle. Nick Williams. Colby Putton. Joshua Taylor. Dave Holliday. Ethan Gaff. Mason Humphries. Camden Mickle. Those two left. Joshua Powell. Jackson Dubesco. Marshall McGowan. Ben Mooney.
I forgot a little bit, I think I just went to the ladies, so they got some running to do.
Did I miss anybody else playing last? I have two coaches, two coaches here tonight, Mark Mickle. And Brad Lloyd.
All right. Do you have anybody else you want to introduce, coach?
We have all our parents and stuff, and supporters.
We'll get them.
Ms. Arabley, come on up and get a picture with the police. Anybody else?
So we'll have the clerk read this, and then we'll figure out the picture. Somebody, Clerk?
Burns High School 2A Baseball Championship. Whereas Cleveland County is proud to be home to Burns High School, and whereas Burns High School Boys Baseball Team, the Bulldogs, through hard work and perseverance, over thirty-two hard-fought games, achieved the NCHSA A2A Baseball State Championship. As the Bulldogs take great pride in respecting their opponents and playing the game of baseball with class and dignity, and whereas the demanding athletic competition requires the highest levels of skills, determination, hard work, and focus on selflessness, commitment to others, and whereas these twenty-four outstanding high school players, Ben Mooney, Joshua Powell, Colby Putton, Gabe Holliday, Josh Taylor, Nick Williams, Jacob Whiteside, Hagan Hoyle, Hayden Smith, Ethan Guy, Camden McCall, Mason Humphries, Reed Stroop, Jackson Dubesco, and Marshall McGowan, have represented themselves, their families, the school, and our community proudly. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby commends, congratulates, and gives special recognition to the Burns High School baseball team for the extraordinary achievement of its first-ever appearance at the state baseball tournament. Adopted this the twentieth day of June, 2023.
Congratulations.
Commissioner, I want to have you guys stay up there.
We're gonna stay up there.
We're gonna stay up here. We're gonna look at it like a team photo, all us in the back, all us in the front.
We're up a little bit.
No, we're just talking about how tall you are.
Phyllis, Phyllis, put that front row underneath. Hold front row.
The whole front.
Hold front row.
Don't worry, Phyllis tells us what to do, too.
Yeah, we're gonna get in this story after a while. I can't see Deb, I gotta get Deb in the hole.
You want her to stand in chair?
Yeah, Deb, you're good there. Ben, just move, try and fit this way, there we go. All right, I got everybody. You ready? One, two, three. Bulldogs. Before anybody moves, anybody else gonna take a picture with Deb? Y'all can go up real quick.
Carrie, I'll take your picture.
I want to pull for you guys, Deb.
No pressure, because then y'all will beat. Thank you guys. Congratulations, guys, good luck. Yes, sir. What you doing in the county? Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, we understand. Get cleaned up sometime.
Thank you for these congratulations.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, great job. Great job.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you, thank you, congratulations.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
At this time, I'll recognize our inter-county manager, Mr. Carpenter, to present the consent items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a number of items on consent tonight. First item is the approval of the minutes from the June 2, special call meeting and minutes from the June 6, 2023 regular commissioners' meeting. Finance Department has a budget transfer summary as required by North Carolina Journal statutes. All internal transfers shall be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The budget transfer summary included in the commissioners' package tonight is for May 8, 2023 through May 26, 2023. Tax Administration is presenting the Tax Collector's Monthly Report, May 2023, collection report to include real estate taxes and vehicle taxes, collecting showing ninety-seven-point-nine-eight percent collection rate, slightly lower than this time last year, which was ninety-eight-point-thirty-three percent. Tax Administration also is presenting their abatements and supplements for April 2023. Monthly abatements total of three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cent, and the monthly supplements total, six thousand eight hundred and three dollars and five cent. Also, on this same item, item D, there's a late application for exemption and exclusion for North Carolina Journal statutes. Every owner of property claiming exemption or exclusion from property taxes under the provisions of this subchapter has the burden of establishing that that property is entitled to the exemption or exclusion. We had five applications that were filed after the deadline for the exemption or exclusion. They all are being recommended for approval as they qualify for the program requested. The impact to the county is a total of two thousand seven hundred dollars. Sheriff's Office has a budget amendment, number sixty-six, budget allocation for five thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars in donated funds designated for the annual Low Country Bull, Drug-Indaged Youth Meeting Supplies, and the Sheriff's Christmas Project Gifts. Item F is another Sheriff's Office Budget Amendment, number sixty-seven, budget allocation for ten thousand five hundred dollars to cover the cost of the computer-aided dispatch license for the new mobile command post. Health Department has a budget amendment, it's an allocation for twenty-five hundred dollars in donated funds from the North Carolina Pharmacy School to be used toward pharmacy supplies for the distribution of medicines to the uninsured and underinsured patients. Health Department has another budget amendment, number sixty-nine, budget allocation for eight hundred dollars in donated funds from Gardner Web University to be used toward the purchase of supplies to give clients that participate in and successfully complete the childbirth class in the maternity clinic. Cooperative Extension has a budget amendment, item A, number seventy, budget allocation for four hundred and seventy-three dollars in grant funds received from the small animal producers to assist with the expenses associated with the two goats shows that they hold annually at the Cleveland County Fairgrounds. Sheriff's Office also has a budget amendment, number seventy-one, a budget allocation for five hundred dollars in donated funds to be used for the Star Summer Camp. Item K, Finance Department, there's a budget amendment, this is a budget allocation, I'll take care of it. Budget allocation for fourteen million, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars, and is necessary so that finance can close out our current fiscal year. This budget amendment covers all necessary accounts to ensure budgetary compliance and year-end close, and allows for transfer between funds to cover capital reserve, debt service, and necessary projects. Social Services has a budget allocation for three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars for funds for staffing, Medicaid, expansion. The Legal Department has a, there's a resolution in the commissioners' packets, this is for a sale of county-owned property, parcels 20254 and 23043, Cleveland County acquired these two parcels, the first one for fourteen thousand dollars and the second for one hundred and six thousand dollars in 2019. These parcels have no residential structures. Cleveland County listed the properties for sale for two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars and have received a final offer. The resolution will begin the upset bid process. And I have one correction. So I'm assuming that this is, minutes from the June 2, 2023 special council meeting, the approval of, was actually the minutes, correction on minutes only for June 2, and not June 6. I also read that there were minutes included here from the June 6 meeting, Commissioners' meeting, but this is only for June 2.
Staff is still working on the in-depth June 6 meeting.
And with that, that concludes the consent agenda.
All right. All right, well, thank y'all for clarifying that. So Commissioners, we've been presenting the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
If there's no discussion, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any other questions or discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carried unanimously. Now we're down to the regular agenda. First item there is the Kings Mountain Gateway Trail update. Sherri Burke, Burke?
Shirley.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm honored to be here, manager and commissioners. I know some of you, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I know some of you, and some of you know me, and some of, and Deb and I have just recently been introduced to each other, but I'm gonna give you a little bit of a background about myself, but I don't know how I can follow Burns baseball team and all that beautiful hairdos. I need to get mine fixed like that. Okay, so anyway, I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself. I live in Kings Mountain and have for years, probably fifty years, and I'm the director of the Kings Mountain Gateway Trail, and I'm retired. I was the director of the Chamber of Commerce for Kings Mountain for sixteen years, and I helped establish the Art Center in Kings Mountain, and I'm one of the founders of the Liberty Mountain Drama that goes on at the Joy Performance Center, and we are so excited about this year. This is the first time we've had the Liberty Mountain Drama in the fall for the anniversary of the Battle of Kings Mountain. So, anyway, we'll see how that goes, but I do want to update you about the Gateway Trail. It's been a long time since I've been over here, and just thought I would let you know what's going on. It is a wonderful part of Cleveland County. So, I have been working on the trails for twenty-five years, trying to connect Kings Mountain with the area parks somehow. We finally figured out how we were gonna do that, was with the trail, and we now have seven and a half miles of trail, and it's just been a very rewarding project for me to be involved in. I want to ask you all if you remember Carl Spangler. Carl Spangler was on my Trails Committee, and he invited C.D. Spangler from Charlotte over to ride on the Kings Mountain Gateway Trail, and we put him on a golf cart, and we took him on a bumpy ride on miles of trail that we hadn't even smoothed out yet, and we apologized to C.D. Spangler. We apologized for him to be riding on a bumpy ride, and he said, "Are you kidding me? This is a Cadillac." So, he ended up giving Cleveland County a million dollars for trails, only for trails, and that's just wonderful that he felt like that. Carl Spangler was such a great cheerleader for all the trails of Cleveland County, and I loved having him on my board, and I miss him terribly. He was one of my best cheerleaders. Okay, so, to move on with all of this, this is our fourteenth year, and we are part of the Year of the Trail for North Carolina, the only state in the United States that had Year of the Trail this year. So we're gonna hear more about that. North Carolina is just loaded with wonderful trails that we can celebrate, get people outdoors, get them healthy, get them breathing better, lots of oxygen in the air from all the trees and stuff that we're saving by having trails, too. Okay, so we opened in 2009 with a ribbon cutting, and we had four hundred people to attend that ribbon cutting. It was amazing, really was. We now have sixty to eighty thousand people visiting the trail every year. The parking lot is full most days, morning and night. The trailhead couldn't be a better place for folks coming right through the downtown of Kings Mountain. This is economic development and tourism for the area. Let me see. A big thanks to Cleveland County for all that you have contributed, for all the assistance that you have given me and the Trails Committee. The financial assistance has allowed a part-time ranger and other things, supplies, renovations. We've already, it's fourteen years, so now we are having to fix things again, so you all are allowing us to do that. The city of Kings Mountain made possible the construction of the restrooms and the offices. The picnic shelter actually was led by Ronnie Whitstone, and that's used all the time.
And the home builder association.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
And the homeowners' association of Cleveland County, absolutely. The Police Department locks and unlocks the restrooms and the gates, so the Police Department also has a hand in all of this. What a great team we've all been, everybody's on this team. The Carolina Thread Trail has given us lots of money to build trails. They just gave us a grant for the new feasibility study that I'm working on right now. Also, the Carolina Thread Trail has all the trails on their map for people to know how to come to these trails, and you can better believe that they're looking at those maps and they're using them. Was at the trail recently, and I met three ladies from Charlotte that had never been to Kings Mountain, never been on the trail, they had never been to Verona Winery, they went to the winery, then they came to the trail, and then they were so thrilled, they said, "Oh, my gosh, look what we can do over here. We can go drink a glass of wine and then walk it off on the trail." Anyway, I thought that was really cute, and the way they found us was with the Carolina Thread Trail map of fifteen counties, y'all, we are involved in. Okay, so, a highlight for 2022 was the purchase of a four-seater gator, a beautiful four-seater gator that we can really, really use all the time, because there's a lot of construction in seven and a half miles of trail, and we need to, sometimes there's two or three people that go out and work, so, and sometimes we have a whole team of twelve or fifteen people that are working on the trail. They, the people, the committee members absolutely love workdays, and they are rewarded, they are rewarded because they are a big part of this effort, not only for our generations now, but future generations. They know that they are working for future generations, for our county, for good health, good, healthy reasons, and they love that, so I'm very thankful about that. We have also installed a new commercial playground and a climbing wall that is being used constantly, and we want to thank our great state of North Carolina for that gift. There are many Eagle Scout projects, Girl Scout projects, senior high school projects, there's about eight in all, and one of your last county commissioners, Ronnie Hawkins, who is no longer with us, helped with some of those projects, and especially the beautiful American flag that we have flying in the front of the... And the way they found us was with the Carolina Thread Trail map of 15 counties you all we are involved in. Okay, so a highlight for 2022 was the purchase of a four-seater gator, a beautiful four-seater gator that we can really, really use all the time because there's a lot of construction in seven and a half miles of trail. And we need to, sometimes there's two or three people that go out and work. So, and sometimes we have a whole team of 12 or 15 people that are working on the trail. They, the people, the committee members absolutely love workdays. And they are rewarded. They are rewarded because they are a big part of this effort, not only for our generations now, but future generations. They know that they are working for future generations, for our county, for good health, good, healthy reasons, and they love that. So I'm very thankful about that. We have also installed a new commercial playground and a climbing wall that is being used constantly. And we want to thank our great state of North Carolina for that gift. There are many Eagle Scout projects, Girl Scout projects, senior high school projects. There's about eight in all. And one of your last county commissioners, Ronnie Hawkins, who is no longer with us, helped with some of those projects and especially the beautiful American flag that we have flying in the front of the trailhead. Ronnie was very responsible for helping a scout do that. We had an annual run, we have an annual run every year in March. This year, we had 180 runners and they were from all over. I'm not just talking Cleveland County. They were from Gaston, Mecklenburg, down into South Carolina, Lincoln Town, all around. And we do keep account of where all these people come to the Gateway Trail from the areas they come from. And this just brings more tourism and economic development for our county. Also, we've had a Earth Day event presented by the City of Kings Mountain and the Gateway Trail. And the last time we had it, which was in 2022, we had 5,000 people to attend. It was so heavily attended that we ran out of places to park and we had to park people all the way to town. We got rained out this year, but we also released butterflies at the trail. We're on the butterfly highway for the United States, Kings Mountain and Cleveland County is. And we released monarchs one time and then the next time we released a different kind. So we'll continue to do that and we hope that some of them will stay and stick around and have babies and all that good stuff. The National Trails Day event was on June the 3rd and it was so fun. National Trails Day events were all over the place. So we hope to start doing that every year. This is the first year that we've done that. We have a pollinator garden that is huge. It's on top of the plateau and it's in full bloom right now. So if you have an opportunity to get over there and look at it, you might want to do that. We are also going to have a pollinator insect count in August. And anybody can come and participate and you get to take a sheet with pictures of different insects on it. And you'd have your little spot and you mark how many you see. So this is going to go, this information is going to go back to the state. So you can tell that I like involvement. I like a lot of different things going on at the trail besides walking and hiking and biking. There's a lot of opportunities. It is very, very attractive. It is gorgeous, y'all. And I don't know if you know this, but forest bathing is very important in Europe. And forest bathing is when you go into the woods or go on a trail that's heavily wooded, you are breathing very, very pure air and chemicals that are good for your body and good for your lungs that are put off by the trees and the bushes and the flowers. So there's more to just being on a trail than just being there. You're actually embracing this forest bathing. It's a place to get healthy in many ways, running, walking, picnicking, children on the new playground, all being used daily and year round. Nature is abundant as well. We have deer, coyotes, vultures, birds, snakes, rabbits, they all live there. So if someone comes and they see some of these things, these are our babies that live at the trail. Currently, we're working on a feasibility study with a company out of Charlotte with the Carolina Thread Trail and with the National Park Service out of Atlanta. And we are trying to find some more trail, so stay tuned. And hopefully I'll be back with some real good news in a couple of months. I am honored to work with this project. It has been a dream of my life, especially the playground. I always wanted a playground that was open to the public, that was not locked in with a fence, that was safe and secure and beautiful. I've always wanted that. So now we have that too. So, and I've given all of you all, one of our brochures and one of our trail maps. The trail map was requested by Crowder's Mountain State Park because they wanted to send people away from Crowder's Mountain over to the Gateway Trail because it's easy access. It's easy to walk on. Older people can definitely walk easily on flat surfaces, but Crowder's Mountain is so packed that they wanted to move some people. So we came up with a trail map and they give those out over at Crowder's Mountain, too. So anyway, are there any questions about the Kings Mountain Gateway Trail? I would be, I'd love to talk to about it more even. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to say thank you. We've been, an organization I volunteer for, have been using it for hikes for our rescue dogs. And as it's turned out, we, you know, we have these huge crowds when we advertise it and everybody likes Gateway. We went to a couple of other trails and the turnout is nowhere near as large as it is because we have, well, I think the most we've had is 50 and we did one last week and we had over 30 people there and 30 dogs that got to walk. And the trail is so perfect because people that aren't as good a shape can do the little loop. And then we have people that go up cardio hill with some of our more energetic dogs and just have a really good workout. And as they come back, everybody sits under the picnic area and sits around and talks and pets dogs and socializes and it's just, it's perfect.
Wonderful. I'm so glad to hear that.
We're just very appreciative of it being there and all the work y'all do.
And keep coming. That sounds great. Yeah. Okay, thank you all for having me.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We look forward to the next update.
The, I'd like to thank you for what you do. Shirley and I probably know each other longer than either one of us wants to talk about. And you can see how energetic she is at talking about it. And I don't want to damper your recognition tonight because you've done a lot of great things there. But one of the things that makes Cleveland County such a great place to live, work, and play is that we have people like Shirley all over this whole county. And when we get all 15 municipalities, people like them at Kings Mountain, the Cleveland County Home Builders Association helped, the Spanglers helped. When everybody works together, there's nothing we can't do to make Cleveland County continue to grow and be better. Thank you.
That's the truth. Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, I recognize Katie Swanson, our Associate Service Director, to come forward and give us a report on Medicare expansion update.
Evening Chairman and Commissioners. Before I get started, we do have some DSS staff in the room tonight. So if you work for DSS, will you stand just so that I can recognize you all? Yes, so thank you for being here. These are the people that do this work every day, so. All right, so I'm here to talk about Medicaid expansion. And so currently Medicaid covers children, parent caretakers, their relatives, pregnant women, the women, the blind, disabled, and anyone over the age of 65. And it does not currently cover adults without dependent children unless they are aged or disabled. And so there is a coverage gap currently with Medicaid of single people 19 to 64. And so what we know about Medicaid expansion that has been passed recently by the legislature is that it's a part of the Affordable Care Act. It allows Medicaid coverage for low-income, non-disabled adults between the ages of 19 and 64, that coverage gap I just mentioned. And across the state of North Carolina, this will add additional 621,000 recipients to the Medicaid program. In Cleveland County, as of May of 2023, we had 38,336 recipients and that is a growing number. In 2018, we had closer to 33,000. And so what we have estimated with the state's math is helping us see that we'll have over 6,000 new recipients with Medicaid expansion. And so that'll bring Cleveland County's total to 44,000 plus recipients of Medicaid across the county, which is a high number compared to some of our other counties. And what I want to say about that is that we hope that Medicaid expansion will also help us with our health rankings. And so that's a positive thing for Cleveland County. Medicaid expansion will save lives and the reason we know that is people with healthcare coverage are more likely to get preventative care. They're more likely to catch and treat diseases like cancer and heart disease early and they're more likely to continue their medications because they can afford them. We also know that it increases access to mental health and substance use treatment because some of the folks that will now be covered will have insurance to help them with those services where currently they don't. It also boosts rural healthcare and hospitals and families. And the reason it does that is that it adds additional funding to rural communities to help retain providers, keep hospitals open, and recoup uncompensated costs that were previously from people that were uninsured. It does help build a healthier workforce. There's many type of jobs that are not currently covered by insurance, like our retail, childcare. And so that will allow these folks to stay in the workforce, get treated earlier, and be able to go to work and stay at work. What I wanted to share, it's maybe a little unusual that I'm coming in front of you just one day after, or one meeting after your approval of the budget, but as you can see here, this has been a quick turnaround. So on March 27th, the Governor signed Medicaid expansion into law. In May, we learned that Cleveland County would receive the 369,939 that you all approved in the consent agenda. That is for upfront money for Cleveland County to provide positions to us so that we can go ahead and get ready for Medicaid expansion. We do expect both House and Senate has more money to counties that will come because of Medicaid expansion, but those have not been approved yet. So this is what the state did to help us get ready. Our interim county manager, Mr. Carpenter, he approved that in May as well. And then we received the money last week from the state. We do, are here tonight asking for some FTEs in order to start moving towards a training program to be ready for anticipated implementation in September of 2023. And that anticipated is because first, the budget for the state must be passed before, we'll know an exact date, but that is the last we've heard as of this week. It is important for you to understand that it takes time to train our Medicaid staff. We have several supervisors and staff here tonight. And normally, training for Medicaid to determine eligibility and do all of the requirements takes six to seven months. The team has sat down and figured out how to train people in three to four months on one function. And so if approved tonight, we will begin recruiting positions immediately. We will interview and hire starting in July. And then training will start for those folks in July and August. And by our hope, October, November, they would start taking caseloads off of the current staff. Obviously, that's a month or so after anticipated implementation. And so our staff will begin even without those folks, but we hope to have them ready to go very quickly after. What you can see, and the people here could talk about this and they feel it, is that because Medicaid recipients has increased through COVID and we have been under waivers, meaning we're not taking people off of Medicaid for the last few years, you have seen that the staff's number of workload has increased. It's gone from 800 around 2018 to 1,000. And if we don't do the FTEs, they would be up close to 1,200 cases, which is just unmanageable. And so this proposal tonight will help get them back under that 1,000 mark, which is really important. So the full ramp up for expansion, we did a survey, the state offered it actually in 2019 when they first started talking about expansion, and then they did again last fall. We completed the survey and what that showed for Cleveland County is that we need two full teams and four energy positions in order to meet this new demand. What that includes is 14 additional eligibility workers. They're called income maintenance workers and they're number two there. We need two supervisors for those two teams, two additional support staff, four energy positions, because as of right now, both FNS, which is our Food and Nutrition Services, and Medicaid also do energy, so we need to pull that program off of them so they can focus solely on this. And then equipment for all of those folks. I'm not here to ask for all of that tonight. I wanted you to all know about it because the team may come back in front of you at some point. But for tonight, our initial request is the first phase. So we're asking for one team and four energy staff. So seven eligibility staff, one supervisor, one support staff, those four energy and the equipment that they require to do their jobs. The good thing is the state did this upfront money for us, so that 369,939, we've already received plus the 75% reimbursement we get from the federal government for doing this work, will fully pay for this year the positions. And so I'm not asking for dollars. I'm just here to request the 13 FTEs be approved tonight. So the ask to you all, and of course I'll answer any questions, is approve or deny the additional 13 FTEs for Medicaid expansion.
Thank you, Katie. Commissioners, what questions of discussion? What questions do we have for Katie or part of this presentation?
Not a question, but a comment. I just hope we can find that many qualified people because we have trouble now.
That's right.
Filling the positions we have. And I do have a question. We're talking about DSS. With this increased workload with DSS, is that going to make an increased workload over in the Health Department, too? And are we prepared over there? Because we're going to have, if we have 7,000 more people that are eligible, well, some of them are going to have to be referred. But the good thing there is I think they go throughout the healthcare system rather than just everybody coming to the Health Department. That's a lot of people.
Tiffany is here to speak to that, but we do expect money to go into the different hospitals, providers, including the Health Department.
And we are reimbursed for Medicaid.
That's right.
When we take care of those people.
Yeah, I'll just add that I think one of the benefits of Medicaid expansion is the ability to get reimbursement for services. And so I think we're anticipating an influx of patients. We have the ability to handle those patients and I think really are looking forward to the additional revenue as part of that expanded.
And help our health statistics.
That's right. Keep those rankings. You've got both of us up here wanting that to happen. I also will say that we, too, want to be able to hire strong, solid employees and that has been a challenge. And so we, that's partly why we're here tonight as well to really, you know, hit the ground running with that. But we do expect that there'll be some delays just because workforce and getting the right folks in the positions takes us time.
I guess a question I've got, has there been any conversation with the health providers in the county and what they plan to do? Because I think in terms of, we had, they're not providing all the services now because they don't have the staff. They don't have the staff because they're not getting any money. They've turned them away and they're going to the Health Department, Social Services. But I would imagine that being able to gain profit by looking at those people, they're going to start gearing up to take some of those people. Has this been a fact of the industry? Is that the case?
I know that there's been a lot of Medicaid expansion discussions happening with providers, community, since it's been passed. You know, I can't speak, can you speak to the specifics around providers? I haven't had those conversations.
Yeah, I think, so just in Cleveland County locally, I think all the providers are thinking, what is this going to look like from a patient base? And do we have capacity to take on additional patients? Like I said before, I think most of the providers are really looking forward to the opportunity to generate some more revenue, not only with primary care and some of our traditional healthcare providers, but also mental health and behavioral health because notoriously, you know, those are folks that also, we can't get services rendered and make revenues off of in the county. So I think everyone's talking about it and trying to prepare as best as we can, similar to the plan that Katie's provided tonight, trying to prepare ahead of time for the influx of patients and trying to consider what additional services they might be able to provide. of patients and trying to consider what additional services they might be able to provide as a result. So to answer your question, yes.
Well, I feel like that as new as all this is, it's probably gonna be a couple of years before it shakes out and we really know what the final landscape's gonna look like. But I'd also, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the people here tonight and you can transfer, further this on to the people that are not here tonight, how we are so fortunate in Cleveland County to have you working so hard to help mostly people in our county that's not as fortunate as some of the rest of us. So thank you for what you do.
They do a great job.
I think you were talking about the qualifications too, that a family of two less than a certain age can only make what?
It's only fifteen, $1,500 a month. That's right.
A lot of them make more than that, so even though they don't have insurance for qualification.
Any other questions? Comments? So if not, the question before is either approve or deny the request for the 13 additional FTEs to facilitate or support Medicare expansion, which as she laid out, the upfront money's already been paid from the state as well as what the reimbursements would come with that as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed, you say no. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Katie, for all that you do. Thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right, next item, we have several board appointments, so we're gonna begin with the Cleveland County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board. So at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read off the appointments and terms.
Good evening, Board. The first one we have is the Emergency Medical Service Advisory Board. We will, you all will need to appoint a total of eight people this evening. You will need to appoint three people to serve a four-year term ending June 30th, 2027. You need to appoint three people to serve a two-year term ending June 30th, 2025. You will also need to appoint an EMS director and an EMS medical director to this board All applicants have been vetted and their positions are where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, if you'll look to that chart, so staff has vetted all these names based on because of specific requirements for their seat and then they've also identified what the term would be. You can look at the chart at the bottom and then the term that they're being recommended for is beside their name.
Okay, then it's my understanding we can just nominate the whole slate and then they'll flush out into where they're supposed to be.
Yes, sir. Yep, we can do all this in one action item.
Thank you.
Then I'd like to nominate Jimmy Hensley, Noel Kay, Justin Davis, Joanie Blanton, Chad Jones, Perry Davis, Tommy McNeely, and Dr. Ivan Sanchez.
So we have a motion and a second for those names that were read. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we're gonna appoint the Rural Fire Commission. At this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our vice chair.
Okay, thank you Chairman Gordon. We're gonna ask for a motion in a second to recuse Chairman Gordon from voting since he has a conflict of interest with some of the folks on this committee.
Same.
Motion second. All right, hearing the motion in a second, all in favor say aye. All right. The motion passed unanimously. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the recommendations made by the Firefighters' Association to appoint Britt Gordon and Todd McMurray to serve as the Firefighter Association representatives for a period of three years, whose term will conclude on June 30th, 2026.
Same.
Same, second. All right, all in favor say aye. It was unanimous of vote and at this time, I'll turn the meeting back over to Chairman Gordon. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Appreciate you taking care of that. Next item, we'll fill out the balance of the Rural Fire Commission. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to announce the remaining number of appointees and terms to fill the additional seats.
Yes, sir. So Board, at this time, you will need to appoint five people and one commissioner for the Rural Fire Commission for a three-year term set to expire June 30th, 2026. All applicants have been vetted and recommended on the list.
I would like to nominate Chris Poe, Greg Harris, Margaret Hutchinson, Clint Bane, Jimmy Hensley, and for the commissioner, Doug Bridges.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so.
I have a question there. Number five, we just noted on Jimmy on the Emergency Medical Services. I may misunderstood what you told me today, but serving on.
That one, he's fine.
Okay.
That one, he's fine.
Thank you, sir. One to one.
I think most of us are on one to one. I think most of us are on.
So I need to recuse myself.
Well, you know, there was something about serving on two boards, you know, that you and I were talking about today.
This one is okay.
And that's why I was asking.
Yes, sir.
All right, so if I understand what we just did, so we read the names that you nominated was Deb Wright and we did have a second from that, which was. So, all right, so Johnny had one question. So is there any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, then all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. All right, so those names carry unanimous and I think that's the last board appointment that we have.
Yes, sir. That's the only ones we have for this evening.
All right, next item on the agenda is a closed session, so at this time, pursuant What number is that? Does it matter? Okay. All right, so at this time, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider qualifications, companies, performance, character, fitness conditions and appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public official or employee or prospective employee, officer or employee and also during close session, consider a personnel matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute. So with that, I entertain a motion for us to enter the closed session.
Take a motion, you're on the closed session.
We need a second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous, so the board's in closed session. All right. Thank you all for patiently waiting. First of all, we need a motion and a second to go back into open session.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Unanimous. The board's back in open session now. During closed session, the board took the two following items. First of all, we gave direction to the county manager and associated county staff to begin a search for the next DSS director. And also during that same meeting, the board took action to appoint Rebecca Johnson to serve as interim social service director. And we need to vote on that. So with that, I'll seek a motion and a second to appoint Rebecca Johnson as the interim social service director.
So moved.
I'll make a motion. We appoint Rebecca Johnson as interim social director until we hire.
Do we have a second for that? We did, right?
I heard him.
All right. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Rebecca. So Rebecca, if you'll come forward, we need to swear you in. Congratulations, Rebecca. Katie, so with that, thank you for your, I think your last day is Friday, right? Is that correct?
Monday.
Monday. I knew it was getting close. So with that, thank you for your time here, and we wish you the best on your next endeavor.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just we appreciate what you've done, and we wish you the best in your success. And we also wish Rebecca the best in her endeavor, and we will assist you in any way. All you have to do is ask the commissioners or any of the staff up here. We would be glad to assist you. And I know the girls and guys out there will do whatever they need to do to make you shine.
I'd say also congratulations on your new endeavor, and I hope it works well. And I can see that your coworkers are just as excited about this as you are, so I know it's going to work out well. And we appreciate you willing to work with us, and we'll work with you.
And Katie, I just want to thank you for the time that I've got to be involved with helping and being on the advisory board. And I wish you the best. It sounds like you've got a really good thing coming your way, and I know you'll do well at it. And Rebecca, thank you for stepping up and stepping in.
I'll just say thank you all for all your support, and I've enjoyed being in Cleveland County. I will always give you guys the credit as I move on to the next level. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, being with the state, we expect Cleveland County to be first. We need to be first.
All right. All right. Commissioners, do you, any of you have anything you'd like to report? All right. Hearing nothing, none. Staff, anything you guys need to report?
I would like to say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Just thank you to Katie. You're one of the department heads that, of course, I've worked very closely with during my time. And I appreciate, you know, all that you've done for the county and all the patience you've had with me. And good luck to you. And good, congratulations to you, Rebecca. You come highly recommended. And we're excited to have you in the position. I know all the management staff is. And I hope your staff is proud of you and look forward to working with you closely. Interim job's tough now. Just get prepared.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Todd. Anyone else? All right. Before we adjourn, I'd like to make reference and note that the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's chambers. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All those in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. We're in.